All right, I'd like to bring this meeting to order.
Do it.
Please take your seats, well, don't take your seat. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, be seated. All right, first thing on the thing is roll call. Ms. Zambou?
Mr. Kuzak.
President.
Mr. Bees. Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Fargo Hapner.
Here.
And Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Renske is absent tonight.
Okay, just like make a note that Ms. Renske is at her graduation for her son who graduated seven out of 540 kids or something like that.
Thank you for mentioning that.
From Freedom High School, so.
That's his height.
You were 570 out of 570?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right. All right, I need a approval for the minutes of the May 17th meeting. Matt, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You upstanding because you weren't here? All right, next thing up on the agenda is the County Executive's Report. Where's the?
Courtesy of the floor.
Where's the, there's no courtesy of the floor on here. All right, sorry about that. Courtesy of the floor, I have six people signed up. The first person signed up is Rick Repert from Echo Ridge Lane in Easton.
Good evening, I'm Rick Repert, President of Oral Repert, and we're a wall and ceiling contractor who's been working for Northampton County for well over 25 years now. I'm here tonight to discuss the Responsible Contractor Ordinance Number 639 enacted May 21st. While I completely agree with the county's attempt to protect taxpayers from unqualified, unsafe, and untrained contractors working for the county, there are few areas of the concerns regarding this ordinance, mostly related around the apprenticeship program and the graduation stipulations. We've been in business for 45 years now with some of our employees working for the county, working for us for 30 to 40 years. Most of them has successfully and proudly worked for the county on numerous projects and are also county taxpayers. This new ordinance, because our company does not have a recent graduate from the apprenticeship program, would now eliminate them from being able to work for any, on any county projects. Some of these employees have graduated previously from apprenticeship programs, but now for some reason are no longer skilled, safe, or qualified to work on county projects. This will eliminate, this will limit potential bidders for projects you guys have coming up in the future, will increase costs for all the taxpayers, and, which will have to burden that, the increased cost there, and disqualify many taxpayers from working on county projects. The result will bring in more outside contractors from the state and from outside of the, well, outside of the state, to achieve the work that needs to be done due to some of the specialty stuff involved in Northampton County projects. I surmise as council members, you would focus on making the county more efficient, lower overall costs, and protect working families, and bring more job opportunities for Northampton County residents. The ordinance seems contrary to your mission as council members. What I'm looking for here is an opportunity to amend the ordinance to make it fair for all construction firms to work for the county, as well as reduce the cost and burden for the taxpayers. This new ordinance will carve out qualified contractors so that signatory companies will have a monopoly in the county. Ultimately, the taxpayers are paying the bottom line number here for the increase of costs. Thank you for your time listening, I really appreciate you guys addressing this and looking into it. I think it's something you really need to consider, having the opportunity to change the apprenticeship portion of that. Thank you.
Next person up is Mr. Bob Martucci from Allentown, Pennsylvania.
Basically, Rick covered everything that I was going to say, but I have a company who has been in business for 25 years, and we've had people that have experience for 25 to 40 years, and they are as safe as anyone else, and I feel that we should be qualified, and we are qualified, to do the work that, that you're keeping us from doing, basically. And I agree with Rick about the burden on the taxpayers. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Next person is, it looks like Chris Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Becker from McConaughey, PA.
Yes, I know I'm out of my jurisdiction in this place, but I just want to say that I'm also a council person in my own jurisdiction also, so I understand the importance of passing ordinances and how they affect the people that are below them. So, I rise today because I've been a contractor in the construction business for 40 years. I never was in the apprenticeship program back when I first started in the business. Apprenticeship programs weren't something that was really that was offered. You worked and you were mentored with older people. I've had a son who rose up through the industry at this point. He did go through an apprenticeship program, he was in it, he passed it. I've also helped mentor people through the program, and as we, as we stand here tonight and view what you have right now as the Responsible Contractor Act Number 639, I would ask that you do an amendment to it as it pertains to the apprenticeship program portion of it. You know, it's always good to want to have the best qualified people doing the work. I think you have a responsibility sitting there to the taxpayers who you represent. However, you don't want to be inclusive to certain groups of people, you want to make sure that you cover all the people that are in the ability to come in and give you the best possible price and work. So, I would ask tonight that you look at an amendment as it pertains to the apprenticeship program, and if you need help with those, I'd be more than glad to help you, there's associations that could help you also with that, but that's why I rose tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next person on the list, I think, is Stephanie Brown?
Good evening, good evening to council.
Can you state where you're from, Stephanie Brown?
I am unable to due to an abusive situation. I would just like to keep it private.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. I'm here because a couple weeks ago I came to you about the Meadows Run Bridge, which is 160 years old. I go online today and read that it's being fast-tracked to be torn down, and I don't understand what happened in the last two months. And I'm very, very, very disappointed and upset with it.
That it? Thank you. Next person is Richard Groff from Easton, PA.
Good evening. I bought my first share of sale property in Northampton County over 40 years ago, and I've been buying them ever since. I think your real estate department is extremely well-run. I've been involved with it, I guess through five or six, or maybe even seven solicitors. And many times I've been able to work with them to actually change the rules so it's better for everyone. But the reason I'm here tonight is that I think there was a rule change 30 days ago, which is not positive for both the taxpayers of this county, which I'm one, and it's not what I believe the rules of civil procedure require by the state. The new change was, now, keep in mind, you have a share of sale once a month. You might have 50 or 60 properties for sale. I might go and see 15. Then I might choose five that I'm interested, and I go to the share of sale to bid. Now, what the rules say is the sale's supposed to be open, public, very transparent, especially no collusion among any of the parties, the banks, the investors, and even the county. Then there's a rule, Rule 7, a rule of Civil Procedure 3138, and it says, "The plaintiff," which in most cases is a bank, "shall pay the sheriff all costs, charges, expenses, incident to the execution of the mortgage foreclosure." Now, there's been numerous court cases over the last 30 years have wrestled exactly what the sheriff is expected to charge. And a recent case, probably in the last seven years, said the sheriff shall collect poundage, which is 2%, I think in the first quarter of a million, and then 1% after that, on any bid. And it took numerous court cases to finally say, "On a bid." So, if the bid is $10, it's one thing, if the bid is $200,000, it's $4,000. So, I go to the share of sale, and I'm going there to bid. Now, keep in mind, if I bid, raise the price, and the bank takes it back, they have to pay poundage. My estimate the last year, in this category, the county and the sheriff probably collected a six-figure amount of money. Not only myself, but others bid, but the new rule says that if I bid, my bid will not be accepted. A public bid is now not being accepted because my bid is not more than what the bank intends to bid, not what the bank bids. So, what the lawyers do, they stand up and give their price for the bank, and say, "This is what I'm thinking of bidding." It's not a bid. If it was a bid, I wouldn't care, because they would pay the 2%. So, now, I bid, and the solicitor for the sheriff states, "Oh, Mr. Groff, we will not accept your bid." That sounds to be almost like collusion with the banks, because now if I don't bid, then look at the tremendous saving to the bank's foreclosing. They don't have to pay the 2%. Their bid could be a dollar plus cost, maybe $10,000, $12,000, to pay the 2% on that. I have probably purchased 500 properties. I've had numerous discussions, there have been numerous rule changes. I think this change is basically collusion with the banks. It's going to hurt the amount of money that the county's going to collect, and I don't think it's open, fair, and transparent. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we will look into it for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Gus DeArmas.
DeArmas.
DeArmas, there he is.
Harms.
From Bayard, Bayard Street in Easton.
Hiya. Good afternoon, good evening. While I'm here, it's not such a way matter as the previous ones, but I was here two weeks ago regarding the drones, use of drones in Louise Moore Park. And I, I just want to update you. As far as I found out, I talked with Gordon Hiller, who's the park's director, and he could not find any reason, point to any matter in the, in the county's, council's regulations as to, you know, to support his prohibition against flying drones at the park. We went through it, a copy of the county, Northampton County Council, Eastern PA Parks Regulation. So, basically what he told me, he made this up on his get-go, on his own, and he did say that he would abide by the county's decisions as to whether drone flights would be allowed. The only reasons he gave me was, number one, privacy, and I, you know, I pointed out to him, of course, the drone has a camera, but I can strap a camera on my forehead and walk around and take pictures. Safety is concerned, well, safety, you can throw a ball in the park, a frisbee, you can run, it's all matters of safety issues. A drone is a very safe artifact to, to control and fly. It's no more dangerous than getting hit in the head with a ball. The other matter that he brought up was the disturbance as to why people would be bothered by a noise of a drone flying around. I pointed out to Mr. Hiller that when you're flying 100 feet in the air, you don't hear it at all. So, that is not, to me, my estimation, an issue to be concerned with as far as noise is concerned. And again, I, I went over, we went over the paperwork, and he could not see anything. There is a county prohibition against taking off and landing on a hot air balloon or parachuting down from an airplane, but that's within the property of the park. And I pointed out to Mr. Hiller, and as well, I'll point it out to council here, that I can be, not that I would do that, but I can be in a public right-of-way or an adjacent property with permission, fly the drone, and fly over the county property and not land in the plane. I would still be within my rights, the way I see it. The FAA controls the air. The county has control of the property. So, I'm not taking off or landing within the park. I'm landing, taking off from an adjacent area, and I can still fly the drone over the park and still keep it within sight distance and within the 400 feet maximum that it's allowed by the FAA rules.
Okay, well, I thank you, and I'm, I'm sure the Chair of the newly-appointed Drone Committee will get on that as soon as he can. Will there be any?
Well, yeah, I think you saw it too, that email from, that CCAP wouldn't cover the insurance on drones, that's something.
That's a different thing. Now, I mean, I understand CCAP says they won't cover insurance for drone strikes or whatever it is, but if Mr. Hiller had made a rule up that we don't have a rule, I mean, maybe you can look into it and find out.
Yeah, so I was hoping that the next, the CCAP meeting, we can get some answers to them, you know, that we're not liable for anything else.
And consult with the County Executive, what his wishes are, and maybe we can get to, to the bottom of, to the top, whatever it is.
Right, right, I mean, the top or the bottom, whichever way, but basically, this, this is a rule that he feels, and he may be in his complete right in to do that, as superintendent of parks to come up with that rule for reasons that he thinks are legitimate or.
Okay, we'll, we'll find out. Thank you.
But not, you know, not, not anything that the county has approved.
Okay, thank you for letting us know, I appreciate it.
Yeah, as far as insurance is concerned, one more thing, I mean, I'm not taking pictures in commercial matters, this is only a pastime, to spend some time.
Put your GoPro on it and see deer and stuff running through.
Yeah, see the, see the grass, see the trees.
I understand. Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Thank you so much, Gus. Would anybody else like to address County Council tonight that hasn't had a chance? Sir?
Juan Martinez, how are you?
State your name and your address, please.
Sure, Juan Martinez, 2253 Emmanuel Court, Eastern PA.
Thank you.
This is some reference to the contractor certification, you know, as a taxpayer in Northampton County, and also a small business owner with multiple locations in Northampton County. I wanted to make sure that, you know, you guys, you already took the decision, but to reconsider, you know, I want other small businesses as well to have the opportunity to do work with the county, and, you know, the, the current ordinance that you guys put together, you know, kind of disqualified everybody unless they're, if they're not union. I don't think that's fair, and I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing here and give small businesses the opportunity to compete.
Thank you. Thank you. Jack?
Good evening, County Council, ladies and gentlemen. Jack Alessandro, Banger PA. I got in labor in 1973, okay? And back then, you put brick in a hod and carried them up the ladder. You put mud in a hod and carried it up the ladder, all right? So, things have changed since '73, and there's new equipment coming out all the time, and we offer courses on this new equipment to keep the guys updated to how to use it and how to use it safely. You can't, you guys have been working landscaping for 30 years, you're still much using head trimmers that are plugged in. You know, new equipment is being developed all the time for everything, and you got to keep updating and training if you're going to get behind the e-paw. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else care to address County Council tonight? Seeing no one, we'll go to the County Executive's Report. Mr. McCour?
Thank you, sir. Drones. Mr. Dietz, I don't, I don't know how you read that email. I, I read it as it being a response from PCORP, and I believe the response said that the, the use of drones on county property is specifically prohibited by the rider in our insurance policy. So, and the, you know, I guess we've all been on email now long enough to start to detect tone, and I didn't really ask whether they would consider a rider and give us a quote for what it would cost additionally to ensure that particular activity, but I got the impression that they were discouraging us from condoning that sort of practice. So, what we can do, if, if council so desires, I can get a quote for a rider and see what it would cost additionally to, to add that to our policy, to our liability policy, and then you can decide whether it is you want us to go ahead and spend the money to have that currently uninsured activity be insured. Also, in our, in our regulations for how activities are to be conducted on our properties, electric motors of any kind are prohibited in our parks. It's in the, it's in the regulations, so you, you have that as well. So, these are, these are things that we'll get, we'll get that information for you if, if that's what you want, you want to find out.
Well, yeah, leave in mind, at least the cost of it, and so, would they exclude like bottle rock, or not bottle rockets, but you know, the old-school rocket style, you know, the?
I don't know.
Did they even make those anymore?
I suspect they would. Anything, anything with.
Comes down with a parachute, so probably excluded. I mean, probably included, you can't do it.
Well, just saying, because I, I mean, I think they would pose as much of a risk as the drones do, and, and I think, obviously, it wasn't that long ago drones were very cutting-edge, and, and now it's becoming more of a main, mainstream, but.
Okay, but we'll check into that, we'll ask them to quote us what a rider would cost.
Yeah, whatever it is, just bring it to us and let us know, so we know.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
So, we are planning on, in, in short order, to move the public defenders back into the old public defender space in the courthouse. That, that process is pretty much complete to be able to do that. The purpose for us doing that is so that we can bring voters across the street and put it in the current public defender space. That will take us, after we have public defenders moved out, it will take us a little while to configure, not long, but some time, to configure the current public to spend to voters. And we believe that Melitas will be gone by the end of this year, and we'll have a plan in front of you in very short order, showing you what it is we intend to do with that property. We have, as you know, the subsidence there, that if, if you've looked at the building, the building is, is orientated such that it's ready to fall down the hill. You can't, we won't be able to maintain that forever, and I do not believe it's in the interest of the county to expend the funds necessary to deal with that problem, to deal with the mold, which isn't a problem now, but has been a recurrent problem through the life of the building since we've owned it. And the electrical problem, which we have fixed for the time being, would need to be, I believe, completely addressed in, in the tune of several thousands of dollars, maybe in the tens of thousands of dollars. So, the, it is no longer tenable for us to maintain the Melitas building. One of the things we will do is we will shore up the hillside, we'll, we'll make sure that that the subsidence, if that's the, if that's the right term, will be ameliorated, that will stop, and it will, in the short term, and it's, it's what our plan is, we'll have a great deal of additional parking, which is really, I think, a big need. I see folks, I see elderly folks every day having to walk all the way around this building after they park to get in, to get into our rotunda entrance, and this will cut some of that, come, some of that walk down for the public, and I think Mr. Dirtinger estimates, and please don't hold me to Mr. Dirtinger's estimates, that we could get, we could net another 140 to 150 spaces. Yeah, I, we'll see. I think that's optimistic. So, some good news, today is John Mailer Day in Northampton County. We, one of the, one of the real privileges I have as County Executive is to be able to proclaim days, and we, John Mailer retired today after 42 years of dedicated and honorable service to Northampton County. So, we declared it John Mailer Day. Chairman Heckman, who is a close friend of Mr. Mailer, I think it's, it's accurate to say, and worked closely with him for many years, was at the tremendous party that was thrown for him at Human Services today, and I think Mr. Heckman said, you know, he hopes that it's a real retirement, and that, he explained that he's learned, that Mr. Heckman's learned in retirement that no one's irreplaceable, and that the world keeps spinning. So, he, he wished his friend well, and it was a real, it was a, a very good time. So, I wanted to let you know about John Mailer Day in Northampton County. So, we had a leak at Gracemont in one of our underground water pipes. It is believed by the contractor who helped us fix it, and I'm telling you the end of the story first, that it was a matter of weather-related freezing, and the ground moving, and the ground thawing, and the pipe cracked. It, it appears that we had, the crack in the pipe is three months old. Water usage started to creep up a little bit as the weather warmed up, and then in May, there was a massive uptick in water usage at Gracemont that could not be, could not be logically linked to anything else other than a break in a pipe. So, we immediately, so we learned this Friday night, the Gracemont management team learned this Friday night. I'm not sure Mr. Emili is here, I'm not sure when he learned it, but as soon as Mr. Emili and Mr. Parsons learned of the leak, they had Sonic equipment brought to Gracemont, they found the leak, they dug it up, and they fixed it. So, by, what was it, Wednesday, Mike? By Wednesday, this, this leak was plugged, and it's not, it's not leaking now. Unfortunately, the leak was in excess of a million gallons of water. So, they, we, I haven't seen the, I haven't seen the bills myself yet, the meter usage, the metered usage yet. Mr. Emili, and you can ask him, he's here if you'd like, he said it really wasn't detectable until May, and, and then it became, it became painfully obvious what it was. So, we learned about it Friday night, it's Thursday it's fixed, and I'll get back to you as soon as I know what the bill is, and we'll work with the water and sewer authorities to see if we might be able to come to some arrangements, but the fact of the matter is we used the water. You have, you heard from Ms. Brown tonight, Courtesy of the Floor, I'm sure you've seen the news reports. The P3 contractor, Krieger, voluntarily agreed, and as a matter of fact, asked us to take back the Meadows Run Bridge. As you might recall, Meadows Run, a bridge number 15 in Lower Salkin Township, was listed to be a repair in the P3. I, I don't know why the oldest bridge in the county was listed to be a repair as opposed to a replacement, but be that as it may, they could not, Krieger could not even begin to see a way to make that work, so he took it back. Fortunately, you'll, you have an ordinance for introduction on your agenda tonight, and GPA voted yesterday to send it back to us. When you pass your ordinance, we'll vote to take it back, and then it'll, it'll be a deed to us, and we were very fortunate to have an agreement at the Planning Commission, at the Transportation Study Group yesterday, to have this bridge placed on the tip. And so, and there will be engineering done almost immediately, Mike, as soon as we get the agreement signed. 80% will be the federal and state funding on the engineering, and 20% will be county money. We're getting a credit, I believe, Mr. Dirtinger?
Yes.
We're getting a credit, which we believe is $660,000 approximately, from Krieger, which we will, of course, apply to the construction costs of the bridge, that'll be part of our 20%. And we expect that the construction costs, which could be as much as $3 million, but Mr. Emili thinks will be less than that, but we're, we're trying to be conservative estimators here, and 80% of that, too, we believe, will be tip funding, and again, 20% county commitment. So, that's the story with that bridge. The, the GPA met yesterday and inexplicably approved bills, attorney's bills, for $30,000 over 20 days of work, when there were no, there's no litigation going on. I, I don't know if, Mrs. Ferraro's on the GPA, I don't know if anybody looked at the bills line by line. I, I have myself here, one, two, three, four letters from Conrad O'Brien, actually, five, five letters, from April 13th to May 9th, telling Solicitor Root is how I'm no good. But, but I thought that that would be, I thought that that would be the $10,000 retainer, which, as you know, when you pay a lawyer retainer, their work gets billed down, so I don't know where the additional $30,000 of bills in the last 20 days came from, and this is in the. And this is in the context of Mr. Lucius and Norris McLaughlin being paid, what, $800,000 in the last two years? So it's out of hand.
Is that, are those bills regarding the possible lawsuit?
The possible lawsuit against the county?
I don't know, I haven't seen the bills.
They were all, everything was line by line when it was billed.
Yeah, but they're the law firm that I think you guys hired to possibly sue the county.
I don't know.
Well, no, I'm just.
Let's bring it up at the Finance Committee meeting.
I thought maybe he had, I thought he might have had some insight, that's all.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Well, no, I just wondered if you got the bills, and I agree with Mrs. Farrar, we'll talk about it at the Finance Committee meeting, I just wondered if that was related to a possible lawsuit against the county.
I think, I think from the context of the meeting, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So we made our milestone payment to Krieger, so that everyone can see tangibly, again, that we are committed to making sure that the bridges that can be repaired by Krieger in the P3 will be repaired by Krieger. What was that payment, 1.2 million?
Two million.
Two million? And when did we make the $2 million payment?
We made the payment, it was due on the 31st, we made it the Friday, Thursday or Friday before.
So we still only have one bridge delivered. Three or four are under construction now, is that correct? And we're hoping to have, they're supposed to have 10 done by the end of the year, we're hoping to have nine delivered. The 10th will not be done, no. So that is, that's our report there. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Well, I'd just like to say, at that meeting, that it was stated by the GPA that we passed an ordinance to do a study to do, to build a prison with a P3. And I'd like to set the record straight, that we passed $500,000 in our budget to do a study on site planning for the prison and for the DLR group that did the study of how the prison was, if everybody remembers, that was here. And out of all that money, our favorite attorney billed $153,343.50 of that money that we gave them for a study for a site. We did not approve from this council, that I remember, do you remember?
Mm-mm.
Peg, you approved the payment, but we did not approve a study to build a prison with a P3. I don't even believe that it was passed by the state that it was a possibility to have a P3.
No.
But somewhere along the line, this board has gone rogue and decided that they're going to pass their own ordinance and tell Lucius or the attorney to study and go to the state and lobby for a P3 to build a prison. And we had no, nothing to do with that. So I just wanted to set the record straight.
We, no, nevermind.
Just to answer the question as to why this bridge was in repair rather than replace, we have known the troubles with that bridge for maybe 12 years. But there's been significant pushback from local residents and officials against replacing that bridge.
Story.
And that is the reason why it was scheduled for repair rather than replace. So I agree with you, it should have been replaced 12 years ago. But, you know, we tried to work with the municipal officials and some of the residents, and unfortunately, it's no longer possible. So I support what you did, and I look forward to it being replaced as soon as possible.
Mr. Dirtinger reminds me that there was a plan in place to have it replaced many years ago. It fell through. So it's going to be replaced. And we're going to, we're going to replace it in a way we hope that pays at least homage to the historic appearing character. It's not actually historic.
Another question. Can I have a point of clarification on these bills? Because you just said that they're all listed, so does that mean they sent you a list or an itemized list?
No.
They paid them, it's GPA bills.
So it was listed in their private minutes and their information? So we have no understanding of what was paid? That's their private?
I have no idea, I have no idea how you could bill $30,000. I can't imagine, I'm sure there's legitimate reasons for it.
So if it's probably.
But in my opinion, I can't imagine how you bill $30,000.
I can't imagine how you bill $800,000. I can't imagine how you bill $800,000 for doing nothing for two years. I mean, to me, that's impossible, but, I mean, $30,000 in a week seems to go par for the course if you, you know.
I think it was 20 days.
20 days, huh, okay. So, yeah, that's not ours. GPA has their own private deal, and the P3, they own 32 bridges now, that they picked, that Benish, Benish is the engineer? And John Brown picked those 33 bridges to be fixed or repaired.
Or replaced.
And they asked us to give them away to the GPA.
Mm-hmm.
So they own them.
I got that.
It's their money. And they also approved, well, Peg approved to sue us with that attorney that charges 30, that charged them $30,000. It's our money, it's still the taxpayers' money, either way you look at it. And in the $2 million, what are we getting for the milestone? There have to be so many bridges finished for $2 million, or just one bridge covered?
We have some internal disagreement over what it needs to be delivered per the contract, because the contract was written in such a way that it appears that no attorney for the county, who was obligated to the county's interest, reviewed the language. It was written in such a way that it is all for the benefit of the general purpose authority and Krieger, and substantially Krieger. So the county was left virtually defenseless. It's in my opinion that the contract is not an arms-length agreement that gives the county much in the way of any type of rights. But Mr. Barron believes that 10 bridges are due by the end of the year. Others think that that might not be a hard and fast rule. I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep pressing. I know Mr. Dirtinger and Mr. Emili are pressing every, it seems like every day they're working on this issue, trying to get these bridges done. We're committed to, as I said before, Mr. President, I never would have done this, but we've inherited it, and we're going to do it right.
McClure, you had a follow-up question?
Yeah, but did you want to go before I did?
Go ahead.
Well, I guess I just wanted to state that I have a concern about, not the project, because the intent of the project seems reasonable, but I've been to two of these meetings now, and just, the tone and the tenor of it is very disconcerting to me. And I guess I'm struggling to understand clearly the relationship between them and us, given the contentious nature of which they speak of us. And it was just an observation, I'm not blaming, I'm not, but I'm just saying that I watch this, and I deal with group dynamics for a living. So to watch this was, oh, no, it's not that, it's the council. Oh, no, the council didn't do that, it's us. Oh, no, but it's not us, it's Mike and Emili. And it was, it was, there were three people that domineered the entire conversation, there doesn't seem to be an opportunity for any of the other members to comment, question, or vote. And I detect a real reticence for them to come forward to discuss this with us at all. And I'm going to wait and see if they show. And when I say they, I'm speaking to specific people, I'm not speaking about you. I'm not, you're in a dual position here, and that we could talk about some other time, but it, I don't like it. You know, I'm a new council person, I want information, I don't want a glossy PowerPoint, I just want to ask questions, I really want to understand the nature of the business. And I think I want to be spoken to somewhat respectfully by these folks. And I, they, we had taxpayers there the other day, for those of you that didn't see the minutes, and they were spoken to so disrespectfully. And that alone.
You know, that's perception.
My perception is that they were spoken to very, very, very disrespectfully. They were yelled at, they weren't allowed to finish sentences. And it was not, again, by all of the members, it was two or three people dominating the dialogue. And we don't operate that way here, so I would certainly hope that none of the other committees that come under our purview would act that way as well. So again, I'm going to sit in some naivete with this, but I'd like to just state that I have some serious concerns, and I hope we get to ask those questions at the Finance Committee.
Well, I think if I could just briefly reply to your observation, I think there was a question in there, I say respectfully. Look, there's two things. One, council has almost no role in this process now. A previous council, which is, I think, a legal flaw that I'm not interested in testing at this time, you have absolutely no role. The one role that I think the point that Mr. Langen was making by sending residents to you was, and I thought it was a little cute by half, was to pressure you to take bridges out of the P3 and find other bridges for us to put back in. That's what I think he was getting at when he was talking about that. I think the sort of animosity, if you will, that you're detecting is institutional to an extent, and may be, you know, personalities as well, myself included. I don't exonerate myself entirely from blame here. But what was going on here, in addition to the P3 doing the bridges, in addition to the plan to put a prison at Gracemont, which was, you know, in full germination, was this notion that GPA would get in this business of marketing P3s to other municipalities and counties? And Northampton County GPA would serve as the conduit, if you will, for these other municipalities to do a wide variety of things as P3, build prisons, buy buildings, they were, and this isn't speculation on my part, it's, Mr. Heckman read it in the meeting minutes, they had, they were doing website work to advertise this work, they were traveling all over the place to drum up interest in having Northampton County General Purpose Authority do P3s for other jurisdictions. And Mr. Barron and I met with Mr. Langen and Mr. Donnie very early in my term, and Mr. Langen said, well, you know, we're going to do this, and what do you think about it? And I said, I have absolutely no interest in it. And I think after that bucket of cold water, there probably was, the temperature was probably changed, and I think because I threw a wrench into those particular plans, which could have seen, you know, a lot of money generated for law firms and maybe certain individuals, the, some of the animosity flows from that.
Do we have a right to see the written contracts?
Yeah.
Because even, there was an allusion to, or a reference to someone being the eyes and ears of the project, quote unquote.
But it's their contract. They came into contract, not us.
But the county's being asked to pay a salary for someone to be the overseer of the project, yet somebody else stood here the other day, from Benish, is that the right name of the company?
Yeah, they're the overseer.
And said, I'm your eyes and ears. So if Benish is being paid to be the eyes and ears, then why are we paying somebody else? Are we paying helicopter mom fees? Like, what are we doing here? And so I'm just concerned.
Why don't we just wait until the Finance Committee meeting? There's some, I'm beginning to feel like it's deja vu with 911. That's the way I'm beginning to feel with this. The constant parade of criticism. When nobody is, there's fault on both sides, we tried to get people to sit down and hammer this out, we now have three from the GPA who are to meet with three or whomever from the executive branch, and see if we can, okay, this is my complaint, this is my complaint, this is what should be changed in the contract, this is what should be done. Can we please act like adults in the room and stop criticizing everyone, and let's move on and get this little group going and seeing what can be done?
Well, I.
I agree that there's terrible things that have happened in the past, but it was a whole new thinking-out-of-the-box concept to finally get these bridges done. And then they just took it and ran far into the distance and far and away from just our little bridges.
But Mrs. Farrar.
And that's the problem.
Mrs. Farrar, this isn't, but, you know, it's my view that they were taking us in the wrong direction, and it's not over. You seem to suggest that, you seem to suggest that it's over, but I understand that.
What do you mean it's over? Nothing is over. We have these bridges to be done.
Well, you said mistakes were made in the past, they're continuing to be made.
Well.
And I also know that we have folks out there in the world who are attempting to market P3s.
Absolutely.
Who are associated.
And that's not of our business anymore.
Well, it is when, you know, one of them is your GPA solicitor and the other's a, you know, former county official.
May I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
But he can do things on his own as a private attorney.
I think that's double-dipping, but what do I know?
Well, I know.
But again, I just want to clarify something that you said. I am acting like an adult, I am an adult, and I don't take responsibility for this, because I was not here when this contract was made, several of us were not. And so I don't think that we're children, I think we have a right to ask legitimate questions, especially when somebody is sitting there. And when I do try to make a comment or a question, I mean, like, there was definitely a dismissive attitude, which I will discuss with you privately, even in our chambers the other day. Because it's appalling to me, the disrespect that occurred. But I'm not a child, and I think we have a job to represent the entire county, not just this elitist group of people. And again, I don't fault everybody on that board, because there were people who were not allowed to speak. And yourself, you weren't one of them, you didn't really get to speak, and maybe you chose not to, but it was, it's not a group, and it's not a board. It's a dialogue between two and sometimes three people. And I don't want to keep going on, because we have other business, but I'm not trying to be immature, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm not trying to create a fight, I just want answers. And I want to know where our money's being spent.
Mr. Heckman has a question?
Just, yeah, yeah. I will say this, the Finance Committee has been mentioned, and you all saw the invitation went out. I think it was a very polite invitation. I had some people concerned about me and my committee, and I'd like to say I think I'm a very polite chairman. I'm the new softer version of myself. But no, I think you learn a lot, and I got the minutes, and Mr. McClure's right, I've been doing like, old-time college research, where I have my notes and references. Anyway, I've got them from the beginning of 2015. Yeah, I mean, I have questions, and I think that with the committee, I'm not, and we're going to have some rules laid out when the committee starts, so that I'm going to pry the gavel out of Mr. Kraft's hand. And we're going to be respectful with each other, and we're not going to interrupt each other, and people are going to have a floor, and that's not going to, if it happens, we'll take a recess. But I think if you were to look at the minutes, I will say this, the GPA that I remember when it was first formed, I understood the function behind it. The GPA I've read about in the last few years, and I don't know if it is a personality or personalities, that seem to really see themselves as an evolved entity. And I know you said it's thinking out of the box, sometimes that just means you jump out and fall on the floor. And this may be the case where I think they saw this as a possible, they see themselves, they mention it many times, as being marketable. Can they monetize what they do? How much can they make? And I never thought of them as an entity unto themselves to be out there selling themselves to make money, ultimately, from my perspective, from finance. And I don't want to get into, I think for a full council meeting, if we want, let me finish. If we want to talk about everything, the creation, and I'm just concerned about the money in the bills. He's getting bills, he doesn't feel he should pay.
Right.
We're on the hook for whatever happens, and we're talking about being sued. So I am concerned mainly, at this point, that they don't seem to be slowing down in their desires, and how many of these bills that we are getting have anything to do with the darn bridges? Which was the whole point of what the folks that were here, I assume, wanted to do. So I'm hoping that we can get some answers, and I'm continuing to do my homework, but we're going to treat them civilly, but at the same token, I don't even know if they'll come. I don't know if they'll bring the paperwork. I hope they do, but I mean, I just want to say, reading the minutes, and I even read council minutes, I do believe that there were motivations there, that maybe council wasn't aware of, that they had plans, and it's actually spelled out in some cases, to do, this was just the jumping-off point of many, many projects, that would go well beyond Northampton County. And my concern when it talks, if they were an independent and completely independent board, and I know the authorities act, and Jim Hem Street's right, they're like doomsday devices. You create them, and you can't get rid of them. But when they start billing us for things. But when they start billing us for things like going out and talking to somebody in York County or having a meeting with somebody here saying, "We've got a great idea going here," I don't want to pay that bill. I don't know how others feel on council, but to me, that's not even, that's not political, that's not anything. That's just sound financial policy. So, we will have questions, but I just wanted to point out that it really would be helpful if you were to, just, you don't even have to, like, do super research. I want to do it because I was told I don't know enough, so I'm trying to know more. So, anyway, but I would just say, that's my concern.
But I'm not trying to justify the marketable thing to it, because I think it just got way out of control. But the marketable part was that money would come back to the GPA for us to spend on community projects. That's, so.
All right, we've got to move this meeting along, because we've talked about GPA for hours at every meeting, so we'll have, wait for Mr. Heckman's meeting.
But I just say to Mr. McClure, I too was at the John Mailer event today, which was wonderful. He has done so much for so many years. And when you're talking about relocating Voder Ridge, have you given any thought to where else it might be able to go that would be more accessible to the public, such as our Human Services building or else, just have a wing or have a place there or something, a person, not the whole situation?
We've given it a lot of thought.
So I'm sure you have, but that would be my biggest concern or thought.
Okay, anything?
One more. I just want to thank everybody that was involved in getting the bridges switched out. I think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers in Northampton County on this one, and I think it helps all parties involved. So if there's a place we could work together, I think that's the great start. And I'll save the rest of what I want to talk about in my liaison report for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McClure.
Thank you. All right. Old business. We have a public hearing in an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Amending Northampton County Administrative Code, Article 13, Procurement and Disposition of County Property. The ordinance was introduced by Mr. McGee and Mr. Heckman at the May 17 meeting, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Is there anyone from the public that has any questions or comments regarding this article? Seeing none? Anybody from County Council have any more questions or comments? I think we went over it pretty extensively. Seeing none? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
And Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is a public hearing and the ordinance entitled An Ordinance Amending Northampton County Administrative Code, Article 4, Department of Fiscal Affairs, Article 6, Department of Human Services, Article 7, Department of Public Works, Article 10, Office of the Sheriff, and Article 12, Finance. This ordinance was introduced by Ms. Vargo Hefner and Mr. Kuzick, Kuzick Heckman, I guess two people. That's what it says.
I have Hefner and Kuzick.
At the May 17 meeting, the public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Anybody from the public have any questions or comments regarding this? Seeing none? Are there any more questions or comments in council? We had an extensive meeting on it. Seeing none? Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Now, we're up. Any more old business? Seeing none? New business. I have the introduction of the 2018 Budget Amendment Ordinance. Mr. Heckman, I guess, so would you like to sponsor that ordinance, Mr. Heckman? And I need a second sponsor? Mr. Kuzick. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the June 21, 2018 meeting. Next thing on the agenda, introduction of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Approving the Conveyance of Northampton County Bridge 15 to the County of Northampton from the General Purpose Authority. I need someone to sponsor it. Ms. Vargo Hefner, and I need a second? Mr. Warner. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the June 21 meeting. Next thing is introduction of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Preparation and Submission of a Declaration of Taking and Related Documentation for a Portion of the Lands of Wayne E.
Casio.
Casiola and Cheryl A. Casiola, husband and wife. I need a sponsor for this. Anyone?
I'll sponsor.
Laurie, second?
I'll second.
Mr. McGee? Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at June 21, 2018 meeting. Next one we got here is consideration of a resolution supporting SB 1037 Civil Service Reform. Mr. Kuzick, could you please introduce the resolution?
Sure. Whereas the Northampton County Department of Human Services provides care and protection to county residents from infancy to old age through consumer-focused programs designed to maintain and improve the quality of life for consumers and their families, and whereas the Department of Human Services seeks to provide social services to meet the needs of the citizens of Northampton County to further health and independence, and whereas Northampton County's Department of Human Services has struggled to fill vacancies in a timely manner that are Pennsylvania state civil service positions, including county caseworkers, aging care managers, senior center operators, and related support occupations. And whereas, in order to be considered for these opportunities, the qualified job candidate must have successfully completed the Pennsylvania State Civil Service Eligibility Examination and placed on a list of candidates, and whereas Northampton County and counties throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania have experienced many years of frustration with the current civil service system, which discourages competent and qualified individuals from seeking critical human services positions in county government. And whereas Senate Bill 1037, which would streamline the testing and selection processes for county and state civil service positions by moving several responsibilities of the State Civil Service Commission to the Office of Administration, has been introduced this session, and whereas moving the civil service hiring process to the Office of Administration is intended to provide better customer service for those who seek the civil service, seek to use the civil service system, both for employers and job seekers. And whereas Senate Bill 1037 does not affect the criteria for hiring under the civil service system, positions subject to civil service hiring or any existing criteria related to veterans' preference. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Northampton County Council supports Senate Bill 1037, which provides for amending Title 71 State Government of the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes, consolidating the Civil Service Act, providing for civil service reform in the areas of merit-based hiring, civil service applications, certification, examinations, and promotions, and making related repeals. Be it further resolved that the Northampton County Council respectfully requests the support of our elected members of the Pennsylvania General Assembly for the Civil Service Commission reforms proposed in Senate Bill 1037. Now, if you recall, last month, we heard from our Human Services Director some of the difficulties she was having, and this is a bill supported by C cap, and it was, actually, it was unanimously passed out of the State Senate earlier this week. It is headed over to the House, and it's my hope that our delegation will pick it up and support it like our senators do.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion on this?
I'm guessing it's going to be unanimous, because, I mean, this is long overdue, and it's been needed for years. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else?
No, I just respect Ron's opinion, having worked and heard the stories over the years.
Okay, thank you. Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
The next thing on the agenda is consideration of a resolution accepting a donation from the Friends of Gracemont Foundation. Ms. Vargo Hefner, could you read the, therefore, be it resolved, please?
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the county executive to accept on behalf of Gracemont the donation of $1,500 to be used by the Volunteer Office of Gracemont for quality of life expenses for the residents.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this $1,500 gift?
I just want everyone to know that this is two years in the making. This is the first donation that's coming out of the foundation, and there'll be more. And Scott Parsons played a big part in this and the nine members for the foundation board, so hopefully we'll be helping the residents even more for the next few years.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nothing? Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Number six is the consideration of a resolution approving changes to the Northampton County Conservation District Expedited Technical Review Policy. Ms. Ferraro, could you introduce the resolution?
It's basically a name change, from what I understand. I'm no longer on Conservation District.
Well, you're just.
But anyway, it is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the Northampton County Conservation District Erosion and Sediment Pollution Control Plan Expedited Review Policy shall be renamed Northampton County Conservation District Expedited Technical Review Policy and amended as indicated on the attached document. Sections marked with strikeout have been deleted and marked with bold underline have been added, but it's basically a name change.
Thank you.
And if anybody has a question, what do you mean by an expedited review policy? There were problems over many years that developers wanted their plans moved up on the list, so the Conservation District finally came up with this expedited review policy for which the developer pays the overtime involved, et cetera, for their review plans.
Okay, Sharon Pritchard is here. If anybody has a question from her, from council, about this amendment?
May I just?
Can you please come up?
I guess my question is, what was the reason behind this, and how did it come about?
So the main reason for, I don't know if you can hear me or not, so the main reason for the change was when we accepted the new stormwater management delegation, the reason that we hired the engineer last year, that we're now doing an additional review, and the original policy only covered us for the original review. So that was the main reason for the policy update. Aside from that, the other strikeouts include changes for wording for clarification. We also had to limit the project size to 50 acres as opposed to 100 acres. We found that one person can't do that review on their own on overtime. It's very intensive, so we would have to pay two people overtime to do that work. So we limited it down to 50-acre sites. Anything over that would be difficult for the engineer to also review on overtime. So the cost for the fee associated with this is essentially not changing. The fee schedule that was passed by County Council this year increased our fee schedule, basically doubled our fee schedule, so we backed down from the three times the fee to two times the fee. So it's really the same fee for an expedited review, because it more than enough covers the overtime that's needed for the review time.
Yeah, one of the concerns we hear from developers is the NPDES permitting process. Does this address any of those concerns as far as time?
So the NPDES permit process, the completeness process for the application, we can't do on overtime. That's still done on regular business hours. But the expedited review, also taking on that delegation, allows us to review both general and individual permits. So that should help with this scenario, because if they would like their permit faster, we have an option for both types of permits now. We only had an option for the one type with the previous policy.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Pritchard? Seeing none? Thank you. Any other discussion from County Council on this one?
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
All right, is there any other new business to discuss tonight with County Council? Seeing nobody raising their hand? First thing on this County Council Committee report, so are there any committee reports?
Yes, the Economic Development Committee meeting, we met prior to the meeting here today, and we had the presentation of the city revitalization block grants, the city of Easton, that kind of covered the 13th Street area, the presentation of the nature, nurture nature center, and the presentation of the Discover Lehigh Valley, and then we had a review of the community development block grant applications.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any other council committee reports? You got airport, anything?
I know you get upset about this, but you'll live. Don't, the next meeting of the Finance Committee will be held, which, and it's not a report, it won't happen, it's what will be, and you've heard about it tonight, but it's going to focus on anything related to the finances. If we want to get into a global approach to should we, could we, would we do it differently, I'm going to not, we're going to stick, because you see how long it can take. So this is about bills, you know, what money, what we're spending, what they may spend, what they spend. So I hope everybody does, if they have questions, please, you know, be ready with them, because I don't want a future finance, every finance committee to be hijacked for an hour about the P-3 project and the GPA. So, I mean, I'm just saying that, so be prepared.
Why don't you send us out a list of how you wanted to go with your, with Ron Heckman's rules of order?
Well, my rules of order are simple. I got your gavel.
How to engage, okay?
I'll consider doing that.
Other thing I'd like to encourage is any county business be done first and then let them P-3. Let's not go into P-3 right away, because we could have people from, we have a lot of business to run with the county, if there is anything. You never know.
Besides your budget amendment.
The budget amendment's one thing we have to go over, so we need to do things that we need to do before we get sidetracked with this P-3.
And honestly, I did have a conversation with the county executive and about that, what'll be on our agenda and what isn't on our agenda, that whatever we're going to do is what we have to do.
First.
Yeah, because as I've said, and you know, everybody on council knows this, when I was in administration, every issue that people have in departments is an emergency. Everybody's thing is an emergency until you check it out and then you realize.
I'm just talking about the business of the county that we need to have done for the night first.
Yeah, well, there's things that have to be done on that date, and we'll do them. If it doesn't have to be done on that date, if somebody just wants to clear their desk, it'll be done at the next one.
Miss, any other?
There's one of my rules.
Any other committee reports? Mr. Warner?
Due to the Finance Committee's involvement with bringing the GPA here, the capital project has been suspended for another time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Ms. Hefner? No committee?
No, not till next time.
Peg?
No.
No committee? Miss, okay. Council Liaison Reports. I'll start down this way again. Anybody?
The Planning Commission, I was at the Planning Commission meeting last Thursday, and we talked about the tip project and the $534 million spending plan, and not to get on the bridges, but I was really, really happy to see them pull that one out, because, you know, it's a four-year plan. It's not a one-year plan, it's a four-year plan. And, you know, the P-3, you know, cookie cutter, whatever, it's a great analogy or whatever, and it doesn't seem, you know, we'll see how it goes with, for us, hopefully it goes good for the county, but there's a lot of money that was left on the table, and after I get educated with, you know, how the whole Planning Commission works and how this money, some of those bridges could have been paid for by the federal government and state government. And, you know, they missed their, they missed their opportunity, you know, they should have been doing both, maybe, not pointing fingers, just, it's an observation, you know, of what I've been seeing, and I just think a lot of money, that, some of that money could have been used to fix things in the county, like the water problem in Gracemont.
I agree with you, and I'll tell you why, okay? The P-3 program was not called a P-3, it was called a bundling program back in 2012, and it was already started, and the funds were being assembled, and other counties it was already started and the funds were being assembled and other counties were doing it. And this was hijacked and taken to a different level. You are absolutely correct. There would have been money, it would have been available, may not have been as, you[1620.11]